Welcome, everyone, to the July 29th City Council Work Session, our last meeting before council break. And we're going to do the, first up is the interim appointments to the Citizen Planning Committee, so you will need to...
I move to appoint Nancy Bray to the Citizen Planning Committee of the Willamette Natural Area of Alton Baker Park for an unexpired term ending on June 30, 2016.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No hands up. All those in favor, please indicate. Five in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Next.
I move to appoint Erin Walker to the Citizen Planning Committee of the Willamette Natural Area of Alton Baker Park for an unexpired term ending on June 30, 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Five in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you all, and congratulations to Nancy Bray and Erin Walker. Okay, got that business done. Good. So now we are on our work session item, which is the Council Workshop follow-up. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll invite some of the execs up to the table to lead us in the first conversation, which will be a continuation of the homelessness conversation. And then if we have time, we'll also spend some time with the economic prosperity piece as well. So, Mia and Latine?
So at your council workshop in January and in a subsequent discussion in April, you indicated that you'd like to focus on two areas over the coming months. And these topics were economic development and homelessness. And Kurt Corey, Chief Kearns, and Glenn Klein and I are here today to continue the discussion on homelessness. As you know, every department is affected by and contributes to our efforts to work on homelessness because of its community-wide impact. And those of us that are at the table today will highlight several areas and provide updates on efforts that focus on partnerships and building on our existing successes, which you indicated you like to focus on as we continue this discussion. So I'll turn it over to Kurt.
I don't want to have the clicker.
I think we only have one slide.
Turn it around.
I'm going to take just a couple of minutes and then talk about some of the parks and open space efforts and involvement with the deal-for-all issue. I think arguably, the Parks and Open Space Division staff can regularly become kind of a first point of contact and often an ongoing point of contact with at least a certain faction of the homeless community on a day-to-day basis. So talk about just a few things that are going on, and this also summarizes a memo that you received via John that Craig Carnegie had put together about a month ago, kind of summarizing some of these efforts that I thought was pretty well-done and as comprehensive an overview as we have at this point and kind of a point of reference. But, you know, talking about the Park Ambassadors Program, that represents initiative that Craig and his staff conceived earlier this year, launched about seven weeks ago or so in early June. It's really an effort to take more of a proactive versus reactive approach to some of the things we see going on in the park. The Park Ambassadors Program really represents a couple of people on bicycles just being visible and present along the Riverbank Trail System and Washington Jefferson Park, the State Park area. Their role is not necessarily regulatory. It really is envisioned as being a group that ultimately helps raise the positive experience of all park users. They're sources of information. They provide reminders to people about dogs off-leash. They've reported maintenance needs. They have reported a medical emergency on a, you know, every few weeks. So they, it's been a very resoundingly successful program to this point, high-impact, low-cost, that meshes with the Park Watch Program that's been in place for a couple of years that represents a partnership between Parks and Open Space, the Recreation Division, and Chief Kearns' group in the Police Department that has put in place a mobile-based reporting system for things that go on in the parks. Doesn't necessarily mitigate the activities, but allows us to get to a quicker response. And I think a lot of success using that particular tool as well. Volunteer work in the parks, I think you're all well-aware that for many, many years, we've been the beneficiary of very robust volunteer program in the city's parks. The Park Stewards Program notably does a lot of work. They provide more eyes and ears, let us know what's going on and how we need to respond to different events, whether it's illegal camps or whether it's some other issue. You might recall that as we've dealt with our budget situation the past few years, it became necessary to close the Sladden Park restroom. One of the strategies for continuing that service has been working with the Opportunity Village folks who have continued to provide volunteer force that not only provide a work that we can't stretch to anymore, but it also provides a win-win situation in providing additional eyes on the park and providing a productive outlet for some of those folks as well. The River Collaboration will be the last thing that I mention just briefly. A lot of ongoing dialogue with the Willamette River Keepers and other local groups that, again, are not an enforcement or regulatory group or an approach, but simply a way to help us get on top of the illegal camps on a speedier basis. This partnership also includes the sheriff's work crews that respond and help us with some of those cleanup efforts. And I think it's a part of what we do that meshes real well with both the Park Ambassadors and the Park Watch Program. Again, the segment of the homeless population that Parks deals with is, I think as we all know, a piece. It's not a broad spectrum, but over time, I think Craig and his staff have worked hard to begin to mitigate the issue by knowing who people are, helping provide suggestions as to more appropriate behavior. And, again, the goal is a safe, clean, and green park system that provides positive experience for all users.
The demands that are placed on the Police Department, or that the Police Department is called to, have grown over the last few years. We've seen an increase in the numbers of people that we go to who are in mental health crisis. And while we've seen a pretty visible decline in funding to the sheriff's office and to the district attorney's office, there's been this very quiet but similar decline in funding to behavioral health. And so our police officers are more and more often called to the scene of people who are in crisis, and sometimes people in crisis who are armed. And there is a higher concentration of those in the homeless population. So that's probably the largest growing concern and demand on our time with, as it relates to homelessness in Eugene. What you see there is the five, well, in our data-led policing processes each week, one of the things we look at is the 10 people most frequently arrested in the previous 12 months. And this is a rolling 12 months, day-to-day. And when we look at that group of people, what we see is that these are the offenses that they're normally arrested for: open container, criminal trespass, and you can see the others. These are typically places that we are called to where the behavior is such that business owners or homeowners or residents or others call the police because they're frightened or disturbed by what they see, and when we arrive, someone is arrested for this. Typical scenario is one where a business owner's employees aren't able to go to work in the morning because there are people camping on their front step or in the breezeway, and so they don't feel safe getting to the door. So those are the kinds of places where we're called initially, but then we'll visit it regularly in order to help manage whatever their concern is. And then, of course, we work closely with municipal court and the jail and the Buckley House and Peace Health. This is the same types of, the issues that we deal with are the very similar issues that place demands on the emergency medical system and on the emergency departments in Eugene. And then we deploy seasonally in the parks and downtown. We'll make sure that our staffing downtown is consistently at the highest possible staffing, and then we, on an overtime basis, we're able to have patrols in the parks. And the officers that patrol there coordinate, have coordinated this summer with the Ambassador Program and in the past with the Park Watch. When neighbors notice a rising problem with behavior in certain locations, then we'll assign a lieutenant to that, and they'll do a problem-oriented policing approach and dial in all different city services in order to find a way to decrease the behavior. One of the most challenging locations in the last year, for instance, has been the intersection of Coburg Road and MLK where there's quite a few people panhandling. And then with the money that they earn, they'll walk across the street and buy fortified alcohol, and then they'll hang out underneath the overpass there, the bicycle overpass. And it creates a gauntlet that pedestrians and bicyclists have to go to. When we've had the similar problem in the West University Business District, Randy Ellis, the foot patrol officer there, has come up with pretty creative ways to improve things. He'll pay people who are part of the problem to be part of the solution. He'll pay them to pick up garbage and empty garbage cans that he places out, and he'll give them other tasks. And that has effectively changed the behavior, but it has to be accompanied with constant presence of law enforcement. And those are the fundamental things that we're able to do. The last thing I'll mention is that the Buckley House applied for a grant this last year, two years ago now, two sessions ago, which paid for a peer counselor that helps to transition people from the sobering center, which is where police drop them off, into detox, where they can be persuaded to go into treatment. And that apparently has been pretty successful at reducing somewhat the recidivism there.
And I think it was April, and then as part of your supplemental budget, you heard a little bit from the City Manager about the community justice system sort of redesign. A team, including the Chief, Kristi Hammett, me, the prosecutor, some other folks from municipal court, from police, have been trying to look at how can we do a better job using the resources we have to deal with quality-of-life crimes, which is really what the municipal court addresses. And in the past, the way most of that has been handled is through a sort of a law enforcement, prosecutor, traditional-type model, where law enforcement shows up, the people get into the court system, they get prosecuted, or they don't show up at all, and then the judge issues warrants, and we try to get them into court. And what we've been looking at is a different model to try to avoid having either law enforcement or the court have to be involved. So for a lot of these quality-of-life-type crimes, what's really going on is there's some underlying issue that if it could be addressed from a social service provider perspective, then the issue might go away. And so as the Chief was just talking about, how right now, oftentimes, either his officers show up, sometimes it's cahoots, sometimes it's fire personnel. What we're looking for is a different model that hopefully would have, for a lot of these reports of offenses, a social service response, at least initially. So the overarching goals that we have for this are to try to develop a more comprehensive system with our community partners. This is not a City of Eugene problem, and it's not something that the City of Eugene by itself can solve. It has to be in conjunction with our intergovernmental partners, social service providers, but to try to come up with a basket of services that can be available in order to, when we get a report of some of the types of offenses that the Chief was talking about, instead of police showing up, maybe we have a social service provider show up. And then we can try to address the underlying issues. And that way, we can then save for the most serious quality-of-life crimes or the other issues that the municipal court normally deals with. We could save the capacity of that system for those. And so the idea behind this is to use the least amount of law enforcement or municipal court enforcement as is necessary to deal with that particular person. So as an example, the types of strategies we're looking at is when a report comes in of some offense, and again, the types of things that the Chief was just talking about: business owner, homeowner, concerned about something. If we can have a system where initially it's a social service provider who responds, analyze what the situation is, and try to come up with some type of package of services so that the person gets assistance, and then they don't repeat the offenses. In many cases, social service provider isn't going to be able to do it all by themselves, so maybe it's law enforcement coupled with the social service provider. If the person winds up getting cited, okay, now that issue goes to the prosecutor. The prosecutor can then have a conversation with the individual to say, "I haven't filed this in court yet. I really don't want to file this in court yet. Here's a package of services. Social service providers are willing to work with you. If you're willing to do this, I'll put the prosecution on hold." And then maybe it never gets prosecuted. If that doesn't work, case gets filed, and now we use the assistance of the judges to, again, try to get the person into the types of programs that might assist so that they don't reoffend. And eventually, it goes all the way through the system, and there are some people that just aren't interested in trying to address the underlying problems. The judge at that point would have available the ability to impose fines or jail time. Where we are in this, step one is really to try to deal with the backlog of cases that a lot of you have heard about, so that we can free up some capacity to try to design this new system. And that process is going on now. At the same time that we're working on that, we're also trying to figure out how to put together this package of services. What's the first phase? What's the second phase? And it's first trying to design that system, and once it's designed, and hasn't been designed yet, it's in the process of that, it's then a matter of trying to get our intergovernmental partners, social service providers, what grant opportunities are there, I mean, all those pieces. So we're working through that. The team intends to come to the council in the fall to give you a more thorough update on just where we are, what we've accomplished to date, where we think we're headed, where we think there are some significant policy issues that we'll ask you to address some of this we can do just internally, and how we have people respond, or in how the prosecutor deals with certain things. Ultimately, a lot of this will come down to money and help from our intergovernmental partners. So the community justice redesign will deal with everybody who's dealing with the quality-of-life-type issues, offenses, but there are a lot of homeless who are in that situation. And so we anticipate that by trying to deal with those offenses and respond to those offenses differently, it may get to some of the homeless who actually could then be assisted. And if that happens, then not only do they get the assistance, the community benefits because they won't be reoffending. So that's where the community justice piece sort of fits into this, and you'll, again, come the fall, get a much more detailed report from the team.
So the next couple of programs that we'll highlight, you're certainly familiar with, but because they are successful partnerships that other communities look to to model, we'll highlight them today as well. The rest stop program was enacted through council approval and was established to try something new that would allow temporary transitional shelter for the unhoused. The basis of the program requires partnership between the city and private entities willing to manage the rest stops, which are pieces of land designated as legal and safe overnight sleeping areas for up to 20 people. This format has allowed to act in a partnership with the community and other agencies at no cost to the city. We currently have five sites. Three of them are operated by community-supported shelters and two by Nightingale Health Sanctuary. CSS operates sites at Roosevelt Northwest Expressway and the newly council-approved site at The Mission, which is currently being established. We have about six occupants currently, and they have access to services that they traditionally wouldn't have at the other sites. There are two sites on county property near their mental health offices on MLK Junior Boulevard operated by Nightingale Health Sanctuary. The city contracts with Nightingale to manage those, but they are on county property. Those are set to expire soon, and the county is currently looking for alternate properties because they've committed that site to parking for football for the season. And City Manager's Office staff have been working with the county, and we're confident that we'll find a place for them to move to during the football season. About 175 people have used the rest stops, many of which have gone on to live in permanent housing. This has become a nationally-recognized program. We receive inquiries and visits from cities across the country because they're interested in pursuing similar models in their own communities. In Eugene, we have another nationally-recognized program led by Dan Bryant, formerly known as Opportunity Village. The organization has other projects in the works beyond the site on Garfield, so they've recently renamed their nonprofit Square One Villages. And if you go to look for their website, it's also, they also have a new website address to reflect Square One Villages. Square One Villages reflects their goal to help those that come out of homelessness or at risk of becoming homeless to get a new start at Square One. OVE opened in August of 2013 on city-owned parcel of land on Garfield. The city contracts with OVE to operate the property made up of transitional micro-housing units that range from 60 to 80 square feet. The program accommodates about 30 people at a time in a model of self-governance and peer support. The community is also structured by policies and written agreements for each resident, as well as monthly costs to occupants of $30 to contribute to utilities. Currently, there are 34 people being served by OVE. Like the rest stops, visiting agencies tour OVE frequently with an interest in modeling the program, and they receive support nationally, too. Dan Bryant just informed us that they recently received a custom-built trailer from a trade school in Berkeley, California, and that trailer will be featured on the Bring Home Tour this fall. It has solar energy capabilities that they're pretty proud of. And in the spring, Square One purchased property at North Polk and Railroad Boulevard for a new project that they're calling Emerald Village. They're currently working with a team of local architects to develop a site plan that meets code requirements for 20 to 25 tiny housing units. Rather than renting these units, residents will participate in a homeowners association to eventually own each of the properties by paying around $250 per month. The estimated cost to build the project is $400,000 to $500,000, and Square One hopes to start construction in the spring of 2016. Square One has been working with the Facilities Committee of the Poverty and Homelessness Board to identify more property for additional tiny house sites like Emerald Village, so you'll continue to hear about their efforts in the future. Operation 365 is an effort that you've received written updates about but haven't received a presentation about. So responding to Michelle Obama's call to action to mayors from across the country, Mayor Piercy and County Commissioner Pat Farr launched Operation 365 last fall. This is our community's pledge to place 365 veterans in shelter by the end of 2015. Operation 365 aims to boost local efforts by focusing and coordinating existing resources, identifying key gaps in services, and finding resources to fill those gaps. Key partners in this effort include St. Vincent de Paul, the VA, HACSA, city and county staff, and the Poverty and Homelessness Board. On June 1st, Mayor Piercy and Commissioner Farr held a call to action, asking the community to contribute to our efforts. Nonprofit and other government agencies, local property owners, the Chamber, and a variety of businesses came together as we asked them to work from two concepts that are important to veterans' housing. We asked them to be mindful of the Housing First Model, which is the idea that we first help people access and sustain permanent housing, and then follow closely with the appropriate social services to help them to become stable. We also let them know that functional zero is the goal of Operation 365. This is the concept of having a plan in place for every homeless veteran in our community. It commits to reducing the chronically homeless veteran population to near zero and having a fail-safe plan and resources in place that can rapidly identify, engage, and place into housing any remaining chronically homeless veterans. Under these concepts, the group of 60 people called together on June 1st came up with hundreds of ideas to remove barriers and help our efforts. While some of the concepts developed at the meeting were long-term efforts, short-term actions were also identified. As an example, we often hear about housing success stories from around the country, mostly from cities with ample housing stock. In Eugene, we have run into the challenge of having less inventory, and one of the successes that has come out of Operation 365 is an effort by local landowners to figure out how they can contribute properties that haven't traditionally been used to house veterans through assistance programs. At the June 1st meeting, an owner learned that she has a property that could provide housing to seven veterans if some updates were made to the infrastructure of one of her properties, making it eligible for assistance. We've been helping to facilitate necessary changes, and the property will soon be moved in ready. Other work that is happening related to this effort is streamlining processes between agencies and providing more educational services to veterans so that they are aware of the resources available to them. And we're happy to report that we recently reached 200 veterans housed since this effort has launched, and we're confident that we'll reach the target of 365 by the end of the calendar year. And that's the last update we have for you today. We really wanted to spend some time talking about items that haven't been in front of you for a while, but contribute to the efforts that you asked us to focus on related to homelessness, which, again, we're really finding how we can partner with other agencies and entities in the area for this to become a regional effort and to build on the successes that we have started.
Thank you. I just want to, I've got three people in the queue, but I want to say a couple of things. And one is I really appreciate the effort you've made in this conversation today to try to parse this, so you're not lumping everybody into the same pile, that not every homeless person is doing the same thing, and not every person who's doing something that's socially challenging is a homeless person. So I think that carefulness about how we talk about this has a lot to do with how it's received in the community, both by those who are observing and by those who are experiencing. So I think this is a really important part of this, is to figure out how to do this. And even in this conversation, it's a little, I had a mayor's one-on-one yesterday, and at least four of the people came with over the homeless issue, except they were mixing the homeless issue with probably some folks who are not homeless, but they see them as in that group. So it really brought to my mind how important it is, how we talk about it, and how important it is how we express our conversations and thoughts about this. And a couple of things that they brought up in terms of the park issue was a question of how we get more trash containers out into the parks and how we encourage the use of those trash containers out in the parks. So that's one thing. And then a businessperson who's been here for quite a while on West, on 8th, and generally has a house that houses a lot of good renters, but has had from time to time some real issues around how people treat that residents, and things like needles and things of that sort. And he's really asking us to think about how we can help, better help businesses manage the impact on them. We talk about it in other ways, but I don't know whether we've looked into any ways, any tools we might have to help them mitigate some of the impacts on their businesses. So that's just another piece. I think just as we're trying to help those who are unhoused, we have to help those that are trying to go about their businesses and their lives in our area. So just wanted to put that on the list. And then I feel really strongly that a lot of people don't understand about, folks, there's not a house for everyone. And I think a lot of people think there's plenty of services and plenty of places for everybody to go if they would just go, and it's just not true, and especially single males. There isn't much of a place for any single male to go that needs to be housed. There's a waiting list that lasts for years. I'll stop. George Polling.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of things. Chief, I want to thank you for the efforts at MLK and Colbert Road, you and your folks. It's been about two weeks or more, a little more than that, since I personally have heard from somebody that was basically being accosted as they tried to run that gauntlet, as it's been described. So it is getting better, and we do appreciate that. Also, I think it's good to -- and I've had a number of people, about a month ago, I guess now, contact me about some illegal camping going on over by the -- I can't remember the name of the estates off of North Game Farm and by 105. And once it was explained to them, the procedures that the city or ODOT has to take care of to get illegal campers removed, I think the folks are a little bit more pleased with the process. I had one gentleman that actually tried to go out and make contact with that group to try to deal with it, and was basically threatened. And that's when he contacted me, and then Captain Cam Carr and I kind of communicated back and forth. And, you know, it's a long, drawn-out process, and folks don't realize that it takes some time, and then trying to figure out jurisdictions and everything else. But, you know, that particular group that's camping there, according to the information that we received, is that someone decided to take some time off from their moving from spot to spot with the support vehicle and the porta potty that's trailered into the area. I'm also very pleased to see the successes with the rest stops and what is now Square One with getting folks back into -- back on track and also getting them more involved in taking responsibility. So that's a real plus, as well as the working with the homeless vets. Glenn, I do have a couple of questions about the Community Justice Program. And maybe it hasn't been worked out yet, but who determines what level of response and who goes to the issues when they're brought up?
Hasn't been determined yet. That's part of what we're looking at, is rather than just have the automatic be a police officer, there is some type of, at least, question, does it need to be a police officer? Can it be a social service provider? At the moment, we don't have the social service provider who could respond instead of the police officer. Those are the sorts of things that we're trying to figure out, both what the criteria would be, as well as what kind of intergovernmental relationships can we create so that we actually have somebody to send besides one of the chief's officers or fire. Hopefully, we'll have more information for you about how that would work when we come back in the fall.
And that's -- to me, that's a more appropriate response to some of the issues that are out there. I am a little concerned about having a social service provider responding to deal with this. Are they, in essence, acting as cities when they go on these calls? I know Cohoots is kind of a different entity, but any of the other social service agencies, what is -- are they acting as an agent?
They -- not the way, at least, that I've been envisioning. And it's like today, if we were going to -- well, as an example, when we inform a camp that you can't stay here, you need to move, you have however many days it is, at the same time, we will often contact social service providers to say, hey, group of people here, can you go work with them to see if there's services that you can provide, help them find some other place to camp, or better than that, to be housed? When all we're doing is informing those social service providers, they're exercising their own, in a sense, authority or jurisdiction to then go and have those conversations. So they wouldn't be city agents, city employees. It would just be part of their mission, and we're just informing them, here's somebody you can go talk to, maybe you can help them before we have to show up in a law enforcement capacity.
The only concern I had about that was the liability that the city faces if we sent out a -- you know, gave the information to one of the providers, and it went from this level of response needed to this level of response needed. Where would the liability fall on the city?
And we'll be looking at those issues, not -- primarily not because of the liability, but more importantly, because we don't want to send somebody into what would then be a unsafe situation. And so we'll -- I'm sure that there will be, as we try to implement that kind of system, there'll be some trial and error. Okay, so maybe in the beginning, we're not just sending the social service provider, we're sending a social service provider as well as an officer. The social service provider is taking the lead, the officer's there in case they need to be there. And after we get some experience doing that, then we can say, okay, maybe we don't need to send the law enforcement officer for these kinds of situations.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation and the work that's being done so far. It reminds me, you know, as I've said before, you can have it fast, cheap, or right, pick any two. And since we don't have the budget to do anything expensive, that becomes automatically one of the elements, is we have to do it as inexpensively as we can, which means either do it right or do it fast. And I know we don't do things as fast as some folks would like for us to, but I, like you, have opted more towards let's do it right so we don't have to backtrack and do it over and over and over again. And I think we've accomplished that a lot, and what you've shown us, I think, moves in that direction. But it means you're always going to be only doing this much when the problem is this large, and we have to try to do what we can reasonably. And one of the challenges for me is, we can do all of this work at our end, and it's something that you were talking about, but there has to be other partners, and there has to be other people that can then pick up the rest of the burden downstream. And I realize this was at the height of the recession, but when I was managing the 211 system, the statistics we would get was that 2/3 of the people calling for services in the area were being told, we're out of resources, we don't have a service available, which means you can be plugged into the system, but you still can't receive service because there's nothing there. It's not the city's responsibility to provide human services, but on the other hand, if we're picking people up and needing to take them somewhere, identifying that somewhere is a challenge. And so it becomes very frustrating for us to know what needs to be done and then still not to be able to do it. And I know that the Poverty and Homelessness Board is also facing that, and shelter, food, and employment are fundamentals, but there's also things like mental health. And I know that a lot of the behavior calls, when I looked at the five up there, those are all pretty much behavior-related issues. And when you arrive on a behavior-related call and realize the person you're there to serve has a significant mental health issue, and I think that's an increasing number of the calls that you're responding to, there's really not a lot of options for what to do with that person. You can't take someone with a significant mental health issue and just stick them in an apartment. You can do that, but there needs to be something to support that along the way. What kind of mental health facilities, what kind of mental health provision do we have? Sheltering, other services. So our investment in human services needs to be maintained, and we need to make sure that that is the downstream place where we continue to ensure that our money is placed. So I like what we're doing. I think what's doing, you talk about having partners, but as you said, at the end, it all comes down to money. And we've got to figure out where that money's going to come from to help support the partners to provide that downstream service.
Claire? Thank you. I also appreciate this overview and the work that staff is doing on the ground to mitigate some of the more negative impacts of interactions between community members. These are tactical responses, and I think this council needs to be thinking more at a strategic level about how we can reduce homelessness so that we don't need to invest as much in these tactical responses, which are really, in many ways, just moving problems around. I do see the Community Justice Program as an example of a strategic approach that seeks to find a way to provide -- seeks to find a way forward for folks and not just punish them or move them along to another place. In my role, serving on the Human Services Commission, I see the important work accomplished by that joint commission to keep hundreds of families clothed, fed, and housed in our community. And I saw how it was challenged to respond when the recession hit, as Counselor Pryor just mentioned, and many more people were in need of services. We, as a council, found ourselves in a position of being reactive to that and the advocates who demanded that we have a response. So I -- and I felt we really struggled as a city and a council to figure out how to respond, and it took a long time for us to identify some immediate responses in the form of our rest stops and Opportunity Village. So I think having this council take time to think about and define our role in this issue and even set some goals for impacting this issue gives us greater leverage to reach those goals by having a coherent response to the challenges. So I have three things I'd like to see. I'd like to see this council formally endorse both Operation 365 and the Housing First model that it is built upon. I think we need to actively support finding ways to house people, and the Housing First model is proving successful and has the support from federal housing agencies. I would like to see us affirm our commitment to working collaboratively with other local jurisdictions through the Human Services Commission to address homelessness, since it is a regional issue as much as a City of Eugene issue. And if our community court is to be successful, I think working with the HSC will be important as part of the team. And finally, a more on-the-ground thing, I'd like to have us hold a work session, and I've mentioned to the city manager before, on our various housing programs, both through our Economic Development Office and our community office that Stephanie Jennings works with, and learn more about what role we have in supporting the development of affordable housing and housing stock that meets the needs of working families, as well as those we might want to embrace through a Housing First model. We might find that we have a very limited role right now and could look for ways to expand that role. So those are three requests I have of this council.
Eve Gregg?
Thanks, Mayor. And I'm going to agree with most of what Counselor Cyret said, but I want to add another little piece to this. And I think that I've talked about this before, is as we are talking about homelessness as being one of our top three priorities as a council, and probably, you know, prioritization-wise, being at the top of that list, that we look to developing some kind of way of engaging our Human Rights Commission. And more specifically, I'm saying that we should probably schedule some kind of joint work session between the council and the commission to have a very focused discussion on its three -- two or three top issues that I think that the commission could provide us with additional insight and additional direction in terms of how we formulate that higher-level policy that Claire is talking about. Because the Human Rights Commission is working in different work groups focused on, for instance, youth homelessness, which is a huge problem in this area, other issues around, you know, criminalization and those kinds of things, and making sure that, you know, homeless people do not be -- are not overly burdened with, you know, being cited for misdemeanor offenses to sometimes trail them into the, you know, area of now, you know, I need to get -- I've got a job, I've got some income, I want to get a home, or I want to get an apartment, a place to live, but I've got this thing on my rap sheet. There may be ways that we can work around or work with some of that to mitigate the impact of those kinds of issues without doing damage to our own municipal code. And so there's maybe one or two other things that I can't think of right off the top of my head, but I think it would be worth having a long-form discussion with the commission, since the commission is charged with, you know, providing the council with advice and direction on policy issues. And we have not had that type of discussion, and I think it will be worth us doing that in a very focused format, and that we look at having some specific outcomes from that conversation that would inform us better in terms of how we approach a more global way of addressing some of the other issues and problems with homelessness that we may or may not have touched on in this presentation this afternoon.
So I would like to say that I really appreciate the conversation, and I hope that we get some really specific goals about how with reductions, numbers, and things of that sort, that help us really have targets that we're aiming at. And I hope that my -- one of my feelings is that often, the public sees us as reacting to things that are happening instead of having a plan that we're working on to get to. And so I think it's really an important thing for the -- for our community and for those who are finding themselves unhoused, to see the direction we intend to go as a city to make some real headway on these issues as opposed -- we talk a lot about, and as Claire said, we spend a lot of time getting to the rest stops and getting to OVE at the urging of the public, but those seem like, you know, things that we, with the help of a lot of other people scramble to do to deal with a crisis at hand. That's different than a real plan about how we hope to reduce the number of unhoused people in our community. And that crosses the line between the conversation about affordable housing and homeless. It's really the issue about how we create more housing opportunity for everyone, and I think that's one of the larger questions. And that will help people who are having a really hard time just finding housing and those who have more chronic issues to deal with. So I think we have to find a way to have that dual -- that dual conversation. And I did go to the graduation of the -- Judge Brookley invited me, and I went to the graduation of the drug court and the vets' court. And I don't know if you've been in conversation with them, but, you know, a lot of the goals you're talking about are in keeping with what they've been working. And as I watched people who were celebrating their graduation from both of those courts and really finding a way into their future, I thought it was a really wonderful, hopeful thing for people. And part of that is, when they're allowed to, being able to erase people's mistakes and give them a new start. So all of that seems really worthwhile to me. Thank you all very much. But yes, John?
Just a couple of quick comments, because I think there's some interesting intersections with the work that's being done. One is with Square One, they are pursuing tiny or micro-housing, which we've talked before, and so I think they're actually trying to put into practice some of the things that we've talked around here. And so I think that's a really nice piece of that. It's nice that the members of the public are actually taking the initiative on some things, and it just isn't all about the public sector, which is nice. There are some other partners that I think are more robust in their response. I think about the county over the last couple of years, I think have very nicely sort of become really nice partners in this topic and some others as well. The one that a couple of you have mentioned, and I suspect will want to have more conversations as we move in towards the budget, is how to maximize the funding that is appropriated for maximum impact into these kinds of areas through HSC and other fundings that you currently appropriate. So I think those won't be easy conversations, because it means, you know, funding, some people get some dollars, some don't, and some things may shift. But I think, as several of you identified, to be the maximum impact for the resources we have, that's an important part of this conversation. So I'm just sort of foreshadowing that over the next many months will be, I think, a piece of that.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And next up is our economic discussion, I believe. Can you put the next one? Go on, you can. Such anticipation. A last work session.
That's right.
My kids watching the clock.
The expectations are high.
This is our recess preparation.
Yeah, this is after lunch.
These two topics go together so well. So for those watching at home, I'm Sarah Madari, Assistant City Manager, and we're super happy to be back again, talking to you about economic prosperity as you get ready to go into your summer break, and we prepare over the summer for your kind of busy fall agenda. As you might recall, you had a really thorough update last week from Anne Feifield and Denny on all the different things that are happening around economic prosperity. on all the different things that are happening around economic prosperity. So today, Kristi Hammett, Chief Groves, Renee Grubie, and I have been going through the conversations you had in January, and April, and last week, and now. What we hope to do today is, is help sort of narrow your focus around where you may want to focus some, some energy around economic prosperity. So in all of those work sessions, you know, you've had lots of conversations about what the role of the city is and what the role of the city council is. And as you learned last week, almost everything that the city does is in some way tied to economic prosperity. But there were a number of themes that continue to rise up to the surface. These words really represent kind of accumulation of the notes that I've taken over the last several meetings, and will continue to help narrow it. So you have a lot of different ways in which the different things you're doing are categorized. You have the strategies from the Regional Prosperity Plan, you have the pillars of Envision Eugene, you have your council goals and outcomes. And what we've attempted to do here is take bits and pieces of all of that and really just try to say, in the most simplistic form, these are five areas that we've heard you express desire to continue with your efforts. And so what we're going to do is go through these themes, and for each one, we're going to have two slides. And so for each one, there'll be a slide of really high-level things that you need to keep maintaining focus on. These are things that you're already working on pretty heavily. And then we're going to have a second slide of things you may want to invest some time in. And what you're going to discover is that, well, we hope to come up with three to five items that you may want to focus on. We came up with kind of a lucky list of 13, but we think you'll, we think you'll like them, and it'll give you something to talk about. So the first area around regional collaboration, this is something that we've heard pretty consistently. You feel like it's really important that you work, at least strategically at a regional level. And so some things that are happening, and of course, this isn't the total list, that we think are important for you to stay very engaged in, are the Regional Prosperity Plan. We're at 2005 of, you know, five more years left in this plan. And while you heard last week, we've made a lot of good growth, there's still jobs to be made back, and we lost so many before 2010, that we still have a ways to go with wages, unemployment, and increasing jobs. Could be that there's a, there's some talk happening that there may be an additional summit this fall, and so there'll be some opportunities for you to kind of help weigh in on that, guide that, and participate. The new South Willamette Economic Development Corporation, as this kind of gets off the ground and they hire a director, we feel like the council needs to really pay attention to that kind of regional coordination and communication and the efforts that that group is going to, to bring to our area. And then the Brownfield Strategy, this is something we've worked on really closely with Lane County and Springfield, and how we address brownfields really matters in terms of how we reuse industrial lands within our UGB. And we all know that that's been very important to reuse those lands smartly. And then the River Districts, which was the catalytic project identified in the Lane Livability Consortium. Things that we think you may want to increase over the next couple of years or beyond. The Investing in Manufacturing Communities Partnership, this is the most recent designation. This is really important, because it not only ties us really in a big way into the whole Pacific Northwest, but it recognizes Eugene in particular as being a leader in terms of how we are advancing innovation and technologies related to our natural resources. And we think this is something the council is going to want to learn more about and participate in. The 2021 World Championships and how we're going to inspire the world. We think there's, you know, this, as we've talked about, this is far more than a track meet and far more than what's going to happen at Hayward Field. It's really, we're going to have an opportunity to work regionally around things we can do to show the world how amazing we are. And then the Regional Accelerator and Innovation Network, which everybody calls RAIN. This is also kind of fledgling, and the property that you took the leadership to sell on Olive Street, we hope will be occupied by next March, and the property should transfer next week. And there's going to be lots of opportunities to really see how that can grow. So another big theme we heard was, as much as you really think it's important to focus regionally, you also want to spend some time narrowing in on some Eugene goals. So again, with things that we'll need to maintain, there's a lot here still to do around Envision Eugene. We've, if we, you know, it's a lot of heavy lifting to draw the line on the map, but the implementation is really, I think, going to require a lot of leadership at this table and close working with us as well. The works that we've done on climate and sustainability, this was an area that was pointed out in the Tadso Report when they looked at our regional competitiveness as being a very good strength of Eugene, and something that we, of course, want to continue maintaining and not let off the gas on. No pun intended. And then downtown redevelopment, this is an area where we've seen a lot of motivation, we have a lot of momentum, and it's something that as we start to think about how we move to the river and redevelop other parts of town, we don't want to take any energy away from. This is an area that will always need attention, it's an area that generates higher-paying jobs, and it's also an area where we're getting significantly more property tax per acre. And it's something that I think every city in the United States focuses a lot of energy on. But some other areas you may want to consider increasing. As we've talked about in numbers of work sessions, the E-Web Redevelopment Site represents potentially the single most important redevelopment that we might see in our lifetimes. The entire, the legacy of our economic history was really built along this river and this mill race. And so I think, you know, this is an area where we have one chance to get it right, and will require a lot of leadership here and support from the council to do that. We've heard pretty consistently that we'd like to see some Eugene-specific measures. We've heard about disaggregating, a big word, but, you know, how do we really start to understand what Eugene's numbers are, what kind of jobs are we adding, what are our wages? We've also heard some questions and thoughts about what's our gross domestic product, what are we really producing? And we'd like to learn more about that, and that scenario we could probably focus. We know that preparing the new UGB industrial employment lands will be big. It's much more than drawing the line on the map, that's huge, but actually getting them ready where a company like, somebody like Glory B. could come in will also be a lot of work. And then we all have talked about how, together, not just our city, but community-wide, we could do a better job of letting the community know what we're doing, what the priorities are, and how we're making progress. We're going to get to places to thrive, and who better to present that than Renee Grubie?
The Regional Prosperity Plan did identify our quality of life and livability as not only our strength, but really an area that we should build some strategy around. And so as you know, the Library of Future, you've been, you're well-versed on the importance of early literacy, supporting work and career development, as well as improving our technology and access. Arts and culture, you really need to look no further on whether we're thriving than the state of art and culture in our community. Activities of the art and culture sector and local economic vitality are really connected. It helps creativity, helps improve our competitive edge, it helps attract new and innovative and skilled workforce and businesses, and it's really helping define our sense of place. Maintaining focus on this area and the significant impacts that the arts has is something I think we're going to want to keep our eye on as we move forward in the future. This includes supporting things like the Arts and Business Alliances, Arts and Business Loan Program, and initiatives like that. Safe community, this is a goal that we consider to be, you know, one of our higher priorities for maintaining focus. Increasing safety in the downtown has been an area that's been of high importance and a key foundation to really creating and helping encouraging investment in the downtown. It's important for new families and peoples to enjoy and be safe doing that. Also continuing to focus on data-led policing in an effort to reduce property crime helps recruit and retain talent in our community. Other areas that we'll want to keep our eye on as far as safe community goes and momentum is keeping momentum with the fire merger, and also talking about our, the state of our ambulance transport fund and system. Areas that we think maybe you'd want to focus on increasing in this area, we've talked about sustainable funding for parks and recreation. That's not only our current assets and our operation and maintenance of those, but it's also looking at what our future holds for us as far as parks and recreation system goes. We're in the midst of doing this Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation System Plan update, which is about an 18-month process. And out of that, we'll come back to you with suggested needs and policies and guidelines and strategies for how we move forward, and address some new things that are important for the community, and also ways to address some of our existing challenges. Urban reserves and planning for livability, as you discussed in your last council work session, related to single-family housing and the UGB, the population statistics show what we all know, which is our population is going to grow. We want to ensure we maintain our livability and strength as a place to thrive, and urban reserves is one critical way of evaluating the possibilities the future is sure to bring in that area. Investment in creative industries, creative sector workers, that's artists and architects and game companies and culinary, all of the things that you can think of as a creative industry are a key, really to, they're a key contributor to our community and our economic vitality. As we shift to a more knowledge-inclusive or knowledge-intensive economy, it'll be important for us to keep our focus in this area. Makerspace, I think, falls into this, this category. The next area is infrastructure and investment. All of your work sessions, you've discussed the city and the city council's role in creating the conditions for economic success. Infrastructure and capital investments are a key role that the city plays. We have heard from our industry leaders that they've said that connecting our city to the rest of the world is vital for education and economic development. The recent announcement of the non-stop service to San Jose was a significant step forward in that area, and advancing not only our growing technology sector, but also advancing manufacturing and much of our business community. Road maintenance and construction, roads and transportation are foundational to economic prosperity. The passage and implementation of the last two road bonds have really made important improvements to one of our biggest and most important infrastructures that support our community's prosperity. And higher-speed rail is an area where our leadership, especially that of the mayor, has kept Eugene very relevant in conversations that are easy to lean towards Seattle, Portland, San Francisco. And really, if Beijing and Eugene can host a World Track and Field Championships, it's easy to see how Eugene is contributing to the world and will contribute even more with the presence of high-speed rail. Areas that you might consider increasing or ramping up, high-speed broadband. One of the most exciting developments in downtown has been the emergence of the innovation and technology sector. You could do that loudly, too. The ecosystem of, the ecosystem and technology and talent is transforming the look of and feel of the areas we really were the pits just a couple of years ago. The result of the pilot project to introduce high-speed fiber in a few downtown buildings has created a condition that will allow our local companies and entrepreneurs to compete with much larger cities. Enabling our, our local companies to grow in place rather than to leave some place up north or locate somewhere else really play a vital role in retaining the next generation in downtown in particular. And with that, I do have an announcement, you're first to hear here. And I'm going to read this, because I don't want to leave anything out, but we have been informed that the Digital Dojo, which is a pilot program partnership between Lane Community College, City of Eugene, Eugene School District 4J, has been nationally recognized for promoting digital equity by the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors.
That's cool.
The Dojo, yes. Just a little information on that, the Dojo teaches local students K through 12 about computer coding and aims to create an interest in the field of computer science early in students' school career, especially among girls and underrepresented youth. Workshops are held in a state-of-the-art classroom in LCC's downtown campus with funding from the City of Eugene Telecommunications Project Program Funds. And that's a true partnership that will be announced, I guess, later today.
Very cool.
And then, again, you've heard of the Moving Ahead Initiative, Faster Transit. The generation I just referred to wants to find an alternative mode to get to and from home and work. Continuing to plan for faster transit in a comprehensive and proactive way will be an important implementation strategy for Eugene as we move forward. Local business and workforce. In all of your work sessions, you've expressed enthusiasm and willingness to support local businesses and to improve and engage with workforce issues. While downtown has been a priority, there are other efforts underway that will continue to come to council. Two that come to mind that will come to council in the fall, our targeted efforts in Bethel and South Willamette, and there are others that we'll want to continue to focus on, such as the Whittaker area. Business loan programs will continue to fill an important role in supporting local businesses with our existing loan programs and the new program being set up in the riverfront area. And part of the Tadso study indicated an area regionally that we can make improvements on was, are permitting and process of land use processes. Since that study, Eugene has launched eBuild, and we are already processing many permits from submittal through inspection through electronic systems. This not only reduces paper and time, but requires less vehicle trips, makes us accessible 24 hours a day, and completely open for business regardless of your time zone. It's a really great thing. And the farmer market improvements. The Lane County Farmer Market is one of our oldest businesses. It turns 100, in fact, next month, and there's still the conversation, decisions to be made about its final location, and there's $500,000 investment in the downtown urban renewal program for, to make permanent improvements for the farmer's market. We know it's, it's very popular, and it's a loved legacy of our community, and we'll want to continue to talk about that at the council. And then, as far as local business and workforce, there are a couple of areas you might want to be moving forward toward. One is really targeted industry conversations. This was part of an earlier council poll and was mentioned as a way to understand more Eugene-specific challenges and opportunities. We think that a good place to start with this might include the emerging technology sector, especially as it relates to needed investments in fiber infrastructure. In terms of workforce, the Lane Workforce Partnership has been actively convening sector strategy teams and meetings. So, and we've been participating in those. We might suggest that you meet with Lane Workforce Partnership to see the areas that, we don't duplicate what they're doing, so we can do things that would be important for us, that we can move forward in that area. And workforce analysis, in all of your discussions, you've brought up various issues related to workforce that would benefit from further analysis. You've discussed job and business owner diversity, wages, training, education, understanding the various issues and how they intersect and affect one another will be important for us as we move forward. And with that, I'll let Sarah wrap up, but here's what we've talked about.
So at the, at the very end of your packet, we have a full slide of this item, so you could actually read it. But this really represents what I am calling the Lucky 13. It's a lot of items, and what we know is that some of these are already scheduled for work sessions and decisions and actions through the fall. Some of them probably might be better served by a smaller subcommittee or another type of engagement than just a regular work session. We also think that there are some that need some more staff analysis before they be prepared to come to council, but there's a lot of ways that we need to coordinate these to come forward to you. But we think this is a really good list, so, and I like the number 13, so if you want to add to it, you'll have to take one off. And lastly, I think on this list of 13, one of the things that we would propose is that we would at least give you a quarterly update on all 13 of these items, just to help with the telling the story piece, and so you understand how things are moving along, especially if it's something like the World 2021, where we may not be having ongoing regular work sessions, but it'd be a way of doing that. Or you could also consider ways that we might incorporate this into some of your update items when you do council items, that we include some of these. So. So, we're opening it up for conversation, discussion, and thoughts about, are these the right sort of 13 areas or not?
Thank you very much. I think you've done an awesome job of leaning, so, thank you very much. I've got Mike and George Poling and Chris Pryor in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, did I understand you, and first of all, great job. This is really impressive. This is really, really nice. Did I understand you to ask us to think about how to talk about the three or four most important to us, or you just, no, this is the 13?
I was hoping to come up with three to five, and we landed with 13.
Because I was going to say, I don't care, we got to do all 13 of these. We have to do them. This is wonderful. This is a great list, I recognize in looking at that. At least, I, I've talked about at this table several of those things on several of occasions, and usually I'm kind of shy and I hold back and don't say much, but the, a couple of them, I've pounded the table about pretty hard, and so this is really exciting to see this from my perspective, because I believe this is exactly the places we need to go and spend a lot more time on. I'd like to see work sessions on each and every single one of them. And yeah, if we need to create subcommittees on some of them to get a little bit deeper, good. I'm in. I think this is a great, great list, and I'm very excited. Thank you.
George Poling?
I'm up.
Renee, you brought up an interesting point when you were talking about the workforce analysis and to meet with the Lane Workforce Partnership, so we're not duplicating our efforts. I think you can plug that statement into just about every one of those. You know, it's important for us to, to maintain that type of a working relationship with, with the county, with Springfield, with the newly-formed SWEDCO, you know, you name it. We need to make sure, because there's a lot of times where we are duplicating our efforts, and there's no need for it. And actually, we could probably come up with a better product if we combined our efforts instead of duplicating them. And then I do have one question. You know, with the way the metropolitan, actually the entire Lane County area is, is situated, I don't understand the, the need for Eugene-specific metrics. Our employment base is not just here in, in Eugene. We're not just hiring Eugene citizens. Eugene citizens aren't only working here, they're working out in the county, they're working in Springfield and Cresswell and Cottage Grove and other areas. So, I'm, I'm actually wondering why we would spend time on a Eugene-specific metrics. I, I just don't understand that. So, that's a concern I have, and that would be one that I would say, let's take off the table unless somebody can come up with a good reason for it.
Well, I would just interject on that one, George, that council can certainly vote to do differently, but in our last discussion, there was a very considerable conversation about councillors wanting more Eugene-specific metrics, that they appreciate the regional ones, and they know we're in a regional economy, but they really want to know the specifics about our city and how we leverage to our best, to the best extent we can, what, what we can from our, for our city. So, it is not saying we don't care about the whole, it's like, we just like to know and better understand ourselves in, in the context of that regional.
And I would, and it's not an either-or question, I think we need, can have both, and probably the downtown's a good example of that. You know, our downtown's different than other downtowns in the county, and I think it produces different economic statistics than, that wouldn't necessarily just match the broad statistics across the county as far as numbers of employees, wage rates with employees, property tax rates, and income based on different types of employment. And so I think that would be an example of if we had, if we knew more about specifically what's going on in Eugene, in that case even in the downtown, that actually may help reinforce or shape or leverage policies that we'd want to incorporate in the downtown. So that might be an example where it would be helpful to know more specifically as opposed to just the broad, general statistics.
I've got Chris and Claire and Greg. Chris?
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to echo, fabulous work. This is really a great reflection of what we've talked about. And I, and I think having specific metrics for us as a way of being informed is great, but that doesn't imply that we wouldn't work together, because I do agree, it's critical that on all of these, we work cooperatively. And, and I, and I want to make the distinction between working cooperatively and working collaboratively, because I think when we try to go too far collaboratively, that tends to create tension between communities. And the joint urban growth boundary and joint metro planning are good examples of where we went to a point where people became uncomfortable to that collaboration stage. But I think if we work cooperatively, I think we can get a lot done, where people don't feel like they're having to surrender their autonomy in order to be able to work together. And I think that is the sweet spot that we can achieve in all of these, is strive to find the cooperative level where people feel we can work constructively and effectively together, but not having to give up our autonomy. And that's very doable, and I think staff does that all the time, but perhaps we, as the policymakers, need to figure out what that cooperation looks like. With that in mind, I would then target also in on number 13, and I don't want to add one to it, but I would say, under workforce analysis and in the spirit of cooperation, we absolutely need to find the way to work cooperatively, not only with the workforce partnership, but also with education, both K-12 and post-secondary. That is, at its core, the fundamental groundwork on which all of this economic development and prosperity is based. If you don't have a good education base, all this other stuff is just the framework on top of something that's not very solid. And so, the disinvestment in K-12 education, we need to figure out how to try to address, whether at the statewide level or at the federal level, but also in terms of community colleges and post-secondary, what we can do around workforce from that standpoint. Because I will never forget that when Heinecks first came to town, they wrote unsolicited a letter saying, "This is the best, most well-educated workforce we've ever seen," and it was one of the major inducements for why we came here. Yeah, the water, yeah, the electricity, yeah, the quality of life, but workforce translates into education. And that, I think, is fundamentally where the workforce analysis really needs to work. So that cooperatively is a major element for us. So yeah, let's, I agree, we need to do all of these, but we need to do them cooperatively, and we need to recognize the best partners for each one. And I think education, we should never lose sight of how important that element is.
Claire?
Thank you. Yeah, this is definitely an impressive list, and I would contrast it somewhat to our list of homelessness strategies. This is a very proactive approach to doing this work. It's something we should be doing, and unlike the social service piece, which traditionally was part of the county, and so I think that's reflective in both presentations, kind of the different position we are in as a government agency in regards to these particular issues. For me, you know, I think a number of the things on the list are things we're committed to doing and we're, we're going to figure out how to do them. I, I think a, a big one for me that remains a, a concern about how we're going to find a way forward is the sustainable funding for parks and recreation. And so I, I'm certainly going to be looking for opportunities on how we can move that forward. And, you know, if we really had to shrink the list, we could combine Eugene-specific metrics with workforce analysis, and then we'd only have 12, but we don't want to ruin the Lucky 13. And then the last thing I just wanted to note, Renee mentioned safety, creating a, a safe community, and I'm sorry that Kirk Cory didn't stay in the room, because I have to say, when people talk to me about feeling safe in our community, they're really talking to me about feeling safe walking and biking around their neighborhood, or letting their children walk or bike around their neighborhood. And while crime and domestic violence are very serious concerns for people, as a matter of routine, I think most people are worrying about crossing the street safely. So I think as we talk about public safety, I think it's important for us to kind of realize the underlying things that, you know, at least that's what I hear when I am talking to folks about feeling safe. That's a lot of what they're talking about.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I like the baker's dozen as well. I think the thing that I want to try to hone in on is the telling the story piece, the narrative, and I, I'm not quite sure how to, how to, to capture this, but I think that telling our story needs to go to another level. I mean, we've already kind of got the signature as Track Town USA, we've got, you know, the Travel Lane County, you know, Enjoy Coast to the Mountains and all of that, but how do we really, you know, jump out at the rest of the country and ultimately the rest of the world as defining us as the place where you want to be? I mean, I see, and, and no offense to the, to the, to the communities I'm about to mention, but I really am not excited about going to Arkansas, even if I do see their nice, you know, you know, TV commercials out there and all the rest of that. I think we've got a lot more exciting things going on here that we can leverage in terms of being able to market to the rest of the world. And I've seen this before, you know, that Oregon and this part of Oregon has been one of those best-kept secrets, because when I used to go camping back 20 years or so ago, you would see all these people with motor homes that came from Europe and other places that rented these homes, and they would go to different campgrounds all around Lane County and throughout Oregon, and they would spend money and spend, you know, two weeks, a month here, and this was on a consistent basis. So, you know, how do we really, you know, build on what we already have and really get a broader platform, if you will, a more developed story or narrative that really resonates, you know, throughout the country? Because I think that we may be missing some of our best economic development opportunities through our tourism industry, because we are not really capturing that niche, if you will, that, you know, will really connect with other folks out there. We've got certain things that do connect strongly. I think that we've got more to tell that we are not able to really communicate. So, just, just a couple of thoughts there.
Just add to that, that that's sort of part of how we're defining ourselves as opposed to letting other people define us, and I think we have work to do on, on that, so. And it's a really worthwhile thing, because that, that helps us understand ourselves and all of our potential better, and, and really disaffuses people of some ideas that are out there that aren't really accurate. So, I'm totally in agreement with that. I wanted to just add to your, it fits in your list somewhere, but I just didn't want us to forget about, and I don't know how it's going to evolve over time with changes in administration at the state level and all, but one of the reasons we got rain was regional solutions. And so I think we have to build, thinking about regional solutions, that's sort of your working with the legislature and working with the governor's office on our economic issues for our area. So I just wanted to put that in there. And I do really agree, and I know we're going to have some more conversations this week about what Claire brought up, because I do think it's really about connecting the dots. Public safety is about people feeling safe everywhere, and, and then we need to connect that with how we build our roads and how we think about our neighborhoods and all of those things. So there is a public safety, sort of connecting all those dots together piece that really can raise the bar for everybody. And we're in a moment where we're having a lot of those conversations, so I think it's a really important thing for us to, to cross silos as we look at these things in a, in a more whole way. And the other piece for me is, I fully recognize we can't get all the way that we want to go in the short run, because we don't have the resources, but that shouldn't keep us from looking at these things and saying, ideally, this is where we want to go. And then we just kind of work our way in that way, and we only have five cents, so how are we going to spend our five cents? I think it's really more about how do we, where is it we're aiming for, and how are we making our way in that direction and all of these things? So, those are just my thoughts. Mike?
Yeah, I, I agree, Mayor, entirely. That's very well said. You know, the, the only thing I would add to that list, and I, maybe we can find a different way to, as somebody else said, to subcategorize it, is that I, I think you're right in the maintain section, that we do a good job with our regional partners, and that's critically important that we do that and continue to do that. And to George, I would say that the importance of our, our keeping Eugene-centric metrics is for the sake of our policy decisions. We make policy decisions all the time that have an impact on our local business economy and our tax base, and we don't measure the outcome of some of those policies and their effect on local industry, and we should be. Things like GDP can help us say, well, if we make a particular decision about a Eugene-only policy in a different area, and it has a, a, a negative effect on manufacturing, we want to be able to measure that and talk about those outcomes and do, do something about it effectively. But I would say the area where we could do a better job, and the mayor said several times, is, is not in our town-gown relationship so much as leveraging that, that opportunity and that, and that relationship better than we do so far. I think there's huge opportunity, especially in economic development, to make new agreements with the University of Oregon, and I think there are opportunities for us to learn as organizations from each other in ways that can help solve some of these problems. One of the ways I've mentioned on several occasions, and we just read in the newspaper the other day, that the University of Oregon is right on track, if not a little bit ahead, for their foundation to raise $2 billion, which, stick that in an account and have it, you know, that's a, that's a $100 million a year just on interest. I think we could solve our parks problem if we had our Parks Foundation to a significant enough of an endowment, like the university's very good at, that we had the capacity to pay for ongoing maintenance and to pay for our ongoing development of our parks. I think it's the perfect way to do it, and we should ask for their help. And I think in our economic development, we should allow them to, to, to participate and to, and to profit from those industries where they're spawning folks out into the economy with new ideas and new talents, and let the university feed back off of that. I just, I think that's the one place where we could do a better job of plugging in together and, and for everybody's mutual benefit. Thank you.
Yes, Greg.
Picking up on what Mike just said, this is a golden opportunity right now with the new president of the University of Oregon for us to initiate what, you know, I, I've been talking about for a little while with some of you privately, as well as briefly publicly, and that is that we should have a regular 30,000-foot conversation with the leadership of the university, that's the Board of Trustees, leadership of council, and the president of the university. And, you know, in, in the context that, you know, we all should be, you know, paddling in the same direction, and quite frankly, some of the intersections that Mike is talking about could effectively be raised at, you know, a once or twice-a-year long-form conversation where we talk about mutually where we are going, both as individual entities, as the university and the city, but where are we going collaboratively together as we move the community forward? Because we don't move the community forward in isolation. And so, what one does affects the other. If you, you know, if you build a smokestack on this side of I-5, eventually it's going to blow over to Springfield, you know? So, everybody is affected by what everybody else does, and, you know, a lot of our, you know, more higher-level conversations, at least since I've been at the, on the council and even before, I don't think have, have happened. And when you've got a new, you know, governance system at the university, a new leader in the university, I think for us to be really, you know, proactive and extremely effective in how we move forward as a community, it requires us to have those kinds of conversations so that, you know, our policies align better, are better focused, and give us the best bang for our buck.
Chris, quickly?
Yeah, just a word of caution, and I agree, we need to work to be more cooperative with all of our partners. with all of our partners. And the word of caution is if we do that and as we pursue these things, we need to make sure we need to be a good partner and not a dominating partner. I can remember years ago when I was on the school board, and they would say, should we have a meeting with the city council to talk about issues? And we said, the last thing we want to do is meet with the Eugene City Council. Because if you met with the Eugene City Council, they would spend the entire meeting telling you what to do. And so I think we need to be mindful that the Eugene City Council's a different body than it was before, and that we are now a group that wants to be a partner, not a boss. And I think then you get the cooperation that I think we all are looking for.
I know we're right up against the wire, but I did want to, because people actually do listen to us. I did want to say that we have a lot of things that we do at the university on an everyday basis.
Oh, sure.
In fact, the regional prosperity summits were in total collaboration with the university. The goals we set were in collaboration. We each had different pieces that we were working on. We wouldn't have the Rain project if we hadn't been working with the university. We wouldn't have the manufacturing communities if we hadn't been working with the university. There's much more we can do, I'm sure, but I wanted to really give credit where credit is due, that we have our—the things that we're looking at, that we've been able to achieve, we've been able to achieve because we've been in a constant conversation with the university. Thank you.
See you.
Yes, see you.